Applicant is requesting approval of environmental review number 2017-161, general plan amendment number 2020-03, and tentative tract map number 2020-01. Moving on to slide number four. The project site is located between Washington Avenue and 11th Street and is highlighted red as depicted in the aerial view. The property measures approximately 0.87 acres and currently has a general plan land use destination of low density and a zoning destination of medium density residential or two-family residential. The property is surrounded by multifamily developments to the north, east, and south, and commercial uses to the west. In addition, the project site is in close proximity to the planned Harbor Westminster OC Street car stop and is also adjacent to the Harbor specific plan which allows for mixed-use developments. Moving on to slide number five. As mentioned, the applicant is seeking to construct 10 residential units which will be condos, so they will be market rate condos. Each unit will contain a two and attached two-car garage as well as two additional surface parking spaces. In addition, the project does also have 2,500 square feet of common open space and each unit provides a range between 250 and 1,000 square feet of private open space per unit. Moving on to slide number six. This is the proposed site plant. The development is broken down into four buildings. Buildings A and D contain three units and building C and B contain two units. The common open space is located in the central of the development between buildings B and C. The site is accessible via walkways off of Beale Street. There is one pedestrian walkway along the north property line which leads to the entrance of each unit. In addition to that, there is a centrally located pedestrian walkway as well. As mentioned, the development does contain a two-car garage per unit as well as 20 surface parking spaces which are adjacent to buildings B and C as shown on the site plan. Moving on to slide number seven. This is an enlarged site plant of the common open space that's being proposed. As mentioned, the area is roughly 2,500 square feet. The applicant is proposing to program this area and construct an outdoor patio cover as well as which will include outdoor kitchen appliances, benches, tables, trash receptacles, as well as an open space area which would be programmed to allow for activities such as soccer games or to allow for throwing a football or a freebie. Moving on to slide number eight. This is one of the proposed floor plans of the first floor. This is the floor plan of the proposed building A, which again, as mentioned, each unit does contain its own attached two-car garage and the first floors are primarily kitchen, dining, and living room areas. And now moving on to slide number nine. This is the second floor plant of building A. Again, all the other buildings are somewhat similar to this proposed floor plan in terms of the second floor layout. The second floor is primarily composed of the bedrooms and the bathrooms as well as some common areas. In addition to that, each unit does contain its own private deck or balcony. And just to give you a range in terms of the number of bedrooms, each unit has their own different number of bedrooms, but the range goes from four from two to four bedrooms. Moving on to slide number 10. This is the proposed front elevations of building A that will be facing Beale Street. All the buildings have been architecturally designed to be cohesive, which does include a contemporary, moderned craftsmanship architecture. And some of the materials that the buildings would have include stone, stucco, wood siding, and stone veneer and various different colors. Moving on to slide number 11. This is again elevation of building A, just basically depicting the proposed elevations in terms of materials as well as showing the locations of the attached garages and their entrances. All right, moving on to slide number 12. So one of the applications that the applicant is requesting is for a general plan amendment. The project site is currently has a general plan destination of low-density residential and a zoning destination of two residential, two-family residential, which is pretty much inconsistent. So the correct general plan land use destination for our two properties is actually multifamily density residential. Since the applicant is requesting for a subdivision to allow for condos, the San Ana Municipal Code does require that the general plan and the zoning destinations need to be consistent. Because of this, the applicant is requesting for the general plan amendment. In addition to this, staff is also requesting that the planning commission as well as the city council take into consideration rezoning the adjacent properties that are adjacent to this development in order to create a consistent block that would allow for medium-density residential. And just to give you some background, both the developments to the north of this property as well as to the south of this property have currently developments between 17 units and 12 units. So based on this, the current land use destination is being shown on the left and the proposed destination to multifamily density is being shown to the right. Moving on to slide number 13. As mentioned, the applicant is requesting approval of a tentative tract map subdivision and this is basically to allow for a condo subdivision. So each individual condo lot will be sold separately and CCNRs will be developed to basically govern the common areas. Moving on to slide number 14. This project was originally submitted to the city back in 2017 and a Sunshine Orange meeting was conducted. I know it's been a couple of years, but based on the feedback that staff received from the residents, some of the concerns were with regards to too many units as well as not enough parking. Since then, the applicant has revised the site plan and has reduced the number of units to 10 and in addition has complied with the parking requirement which is four parking spaces per unit. In addition, the site plan has been carefully drafted in order to create a common area that's going to be utilized for all the residents. In addition to that, as mentioned, there are two separate pedestrian walkways that lead from Beale Street to the entrance of each unit. As proposed, the project will be consistent with the allowed density range, intent, and character of the medium-density residential and the surrounding properties will also be consistent. And as mentioned, this is a proposed condominium development which will increase and allow for ownership housing in the city of San Ana. Moving on to slide number 15. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project. The draft document was released and circulated for public review for 30 days. The document was released on May 6th all the way to June 4th. In addition, a mitigation monitoring reporting program has been drafted to mitigate and address biological resources, geology, and soils, noise, tribal cultural resources, and cultural resources. Moving on to slide number 16. With that, staff is recommending that the city, I'm sorry, that the planning commission recommend that the city council adopt environmental review number 2017-161, approve general plan amendment number 2020-03 to change the general plan land use destination of the property and surrounding properties from low-density residential to medium-density residential, and approve tentative tract map number 2020-01 as condition to subdivide the property for condominiums. With that, that concludes staff presentation and I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Jerry. Let's start out with what we do, just so you know, we'll be going through a roll call of questions and answers. So you're on the list first, so Commissioner Morrissey, do you have any questions of staff?
No, I don't, I've reviewed all the documentation. I don't think I have any questions at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Nguyen, do you have any questions of staff?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Jerry, could you go back on slide number five, please? On the parking, the applicant indicated that the total parking will be provided 40. No, one slide, number six, I'm sorry. Yeah, go slide number six, please. Yes, okay, so we have total ten units. Each unit have two enclosed garages, so that will give us 20, but I'm counting only 15 street parking, so where is the rest of the, of the 40 parking spaces that were provided?
Commissioner Nguyen, if you could take a look at the site plan, there are 20 surface parking spaces being provided. If you notice, the south portions of buildings C and B, those are surface parking spaces. In addition to that, there are spaces along buildings B as well as buildings C.
Okay, good. Thank you, thank you so much. No idea. Thank you. That's the end.
Okay, Commissioner Rivera, any questions of staff? No, no questions right now. Commissioner Fan, any questions of staff?
Hi, yes, thank you for the presentation. I, I just wanted a little bit of history, I know that they're looking for a GPA here, but for that whole block, it seems like this might be the least or one of the less intense uses, and it seems like all the other lots have already been, I guess, medium density. You know, you have 16 units to the north and I think 12 or something higher to the south. Can you just, can you give me the history if you know as to why, you know, we have this situation where everything else is already medium density, but this wasn't, the general plan wasn't updated properly at any other time?
Yes, Commissioner Fan, thank you. So as mentioned, the property to the north currently does have 17 units and the property to the south contains 12 units. The reasoning for this, back in the 90s, the city did a update to the general plan or an amendment and pretty much decreased the density of a lot of its parcels to mitigate some of the issues that the city was foreseeing because of these higher-density developments. Because of that, we now have this inconsistency, so anytime a applicant or developer comes in and is proposing to build townhomes in the R2, they could theoretically build it by right as long as the project does not trigger any discretionary action. In this case, this developer could potentially construct up to 12 units and do a rental product and not be required to go through this process. However, since this application does require a subdivision for condo purposes, the general plan amendment is being triggered. And as mentioned, majority of the surrounding properties already do allow for medium density, for which is why one of the reasons that the city is supporting this general plan amendment. In addition to that, as mentioned, the harbor specific plant, which borders this property as well as the adjacent properties that runs north and south of Harbor, does allow for mixed-use development. So the thinking behind staff was that since we do already allow high density along Harbor, this particular area will become a buffer zone between high density, medium density, to the lower densities that are allowed west of Beale Street.
Okay, so basically the main difference is the rental versus the ownership of the unit is what I'm, which is, which is why it's referring to the GPA. Looking to the east of it, because we talked about the north and southern properties, to the east, those look like duplexes or single, they look like duplexes to me or a single-family home.
Commissioner Tai, those are actually single-family homes with a mixture of duplexes. The R2 does allow for various configurations, so that's why you have some lots are developed with four, five, single-family homes or two or three duplexes, and that is consistent with the R2 zoning district.
Great, so what we're proposing here, at least on the west side of Beale, is consistent if not lower intensity use than what is north and south of it and consistent with whatever is to the east of Beale. Essentially, we're not changing the character of the space, it's essentially the same.
That is correct.
Thank you, I realize I didn't pose a like a question. Appreciate it, that was all.
Vice Chair Katuras Leo?
No, I'm good right now, thank you.
Okay, Jerry, just a couple of questions. Having gone out, how long has this, this land been empty?
Chairman, I'm not too certain in terms of the number of years. The applicant is on the call as well, maybe we could defer that question to them, but it has been vacant for at least five years.
Okay, well, we'll bring that up with the applicant then. And the other thing is, going around, I went around the neighborhood and essentially what surrounds this particular project is single, single-story homes, and as I think you pointed out, I think that some of them are duplexes, some of them have, some of them are quadplexes, you know, it's like four and five, they're sort of connected to one another, but they're all single-story properties. Given that this project is going to be a two-story project, is there limits, I can't tell from the schematic, from the pictures, the renderings, but the size that's facing out to the neighborhood, are those going to be limited from the standpoint of windows and anything else of that nature on the second floor?
Chairman, just to clarify, the development to the north is actually two stories. The rest of the developments are single-story, so if you, I'm not sure if you noticed, but in, based on the site plan, we actually did take into consideration the current built environment. For that reason, most of the buildings were pushed towards the north and we therefore have the surface parking lot to the south to create that buffer. In addition to that, staff did work closely with the architect to make sure that the placement of the windows were not encroaching into any of the adjacent properties or potentially creating a view issue.
Okay, so you have, you have identified that and worked through that on the current plan?
That is correct. In addition, the second-story balconies and/or decks are all facing inwards to the development.
Right, that, that I could see. Just out of curiosity, given the entry and everything else is going to be on the west side of the property, is going to be the entry?
The vehicle entrance will be provided to the west, I'm sorry, to the east.
They'll come in on the west? And, and everything in this, the fire authorities said it's got everything set from a fire truck standpoint, I mean, it's a tight squeeze, I'm just trying to make sure that we've got that covered.
Chairman, as part of the application, the application was reviewed by the Orange County Fire Authority as well as Public Works, so a fire truck as well as a waste management truck will be able to enter the site physically, pick up trash, and then be able to back up and face forward and exit the development.
And the waste management location is the one that's far right of the parking spaces down on the, on the site plan?
That is correct, that's the centralized trash enclosure.
Okay. Is this, is this a gated, is this a gated community or is this an open street?
Chairman, the applicant has not proposed a gated fence yet, but the street itself, that the internal street would not be accessible to the public. So it's a driveway.
It is now, it's a driveway, so it is accessible.
To the residents, it would not be accessible to the, to the public.
Well, I mean, what I'm concerned about, what I'm concerned about is that in driving around that neighborhood, you know, obviously there wasn't anything significant, anything different than driving through a lot of neighborhoods in San Ana, and that is that, you know, there were, at let's say 10 o'clock in the morning on a Monday morning, there were a lot of cars parked along both sides of the streets and everything else. You've got a, you've got 10, 20, we got 20 parking spaces that are sort of first come, first served type situation. I'm just checking to see if the consideration has been made to make sure that there's, I mean, is there any way that somebody who's parking, owns a car, parks in this, in this particular facility because they, they own one of the condominiums, are they going to have permit parking to, in order to keep non-permit, non-owners out of the parking spaces?
Chairman, I'm not too sure if this segment of Beale Street requires permit parking. Maybe the applicant's aware of this, but either way, if...
Okay. Well, if the applicant's here and we can talk to it, then that's fine, I'll hold my questions until that, until then. Okay. Having, having said that, does anyone else like to, would anybody else like to comment at this point in time? And we'll go through the list, Commissioner Morrissey?
Yes, thank you, Chairman McLaughlin. I just have one comment. I think the development will be a nice addition to the neighborhood. By its virtue as condominium development, it, it offers that extra affordability that everybody's looking for, so I think it's a positive addition to the city. Okay, that's, that's my only comment on that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mar, Commissioner Morrissey. Commissioner Nguyen, any other comments, questions of staff?
No, I have no comment, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Nguyen. Commissioner Rivera?
Yeah, a quick question, as far as, as far as the notification to, to those who are surrounding the area, when was that made? I know I saw the, the notice on the report, but there was also a lot of, some comments as far as letters being turned in stating that there wasn't any or there wasn't, is that just, you know, something that was missed or how did that come about?
Commissioner Rivera, notices are mailed 10 days prior to the hearing date, so for this particular meeting, the notices were mailed on July 3rd and it was also published in the Orange County Reporter on the 3rd and also a posting at the site was made by the case planner on that date.
Go ahead. Finish your statement, sorry. No, I just wanted to make sure that, that everything was sent, I know, usually it does, but it's just, like I said, some of the, some of the correspondence that we got were saying that they didn't receive any information along those lines, so I just wanted to double check.
And to that question, is it also, since this project goes back to 2017, was there notification done at that point in time for this particular project? Maybe that's part of the concern.
Chairman, this, since the project did require a discretionary action and it did trigger the Sunshine Orange meeting, a community meeting was held on March 12, 2018, and I believe some of the concerns by the community was that there was not a follow-up meeting. Just a reminder, there was a work-study session that was conducted as well. In addition to that, the mitigated negative declaration was circulated and a letter was sent to residents within 300 feet on May 4th as well.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Rivera. Commissioner Fan, do you have any other questions of staff?
Not any right now, thank you.
Commissioner Vice, Vice Chair Katuras Leo?
I do have a question in regard to HOA fees. Should I ask that now to staff or staff should I wait?
Chairman, that will be a question you could direct to the applicant. The city doesn't...
Okay, we'll direct it to the applicant.
Thank you.
We'll direct it to the applicant. Okay, I have no further questions, so we'll move on. Madam Secretary, have we received any communications at this time?
Yes, all comments received by 5:00 PM have been distributed to the commission and they have been posted to our website, and I'll provide a summary, summary, summary report of those comments. We did receive six in total, three in favor, and three in opposition.
Thank you. With that, we will open the public hearing at this time. Would the applicant like to speak on this matter?
Hi there, this is Anna Rose, Y&amp;G Architects.
What, I'm sorry, could you repeat your name?
Sure, this is Anna Rose, Y&amp;G Architects.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we're very excited about this project. We worked really hard and come up with a really good floor plan, a wonderful site plan, something that we feel is going to be a real benefit to the community. We have, you know, ample parking, we really worked very hard at making a very nice landscape area, creating lots of private open space. We did work with the fire department and the waste management company to make sure that we could accompany, I'm sorry, accommodate the turnaround between buildings A and B, and that was part of the reason why we removed the initial gate that was there to make sure that the fire department and the fire trucks and the waste management truck could both enter and exit without any problems. You had asked an additional question regarding parking by permit, and I think that's an excellent idea. The project isn't yet at a point where the CCNRs have been written, that is something that would be forthcoming. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Okay. Would that, let me start off with Commissioner Morrissey, is there any questions you have of the, of the applicant?
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Commissioner, Commissioner Nguyen?
No, no question, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera? Okay, Commissioner Fan?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner, Vice Chair Katuras Leo? Okay. Um, Commissioner, Vice Chair, Contreras Leo?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I see that there will be HOA dues, correct? Hello?
I'm sorry, what is your question?
There will be HOA fees.
No, I'm not entirely aware, we have not discussed that with the owner. Again, that is forthcoming as far as the CCNRs. I thought I read that in the staff report. Oh, my apologies if I am, uh, contradicting the staff report.
Okay, 'cause that's, I was going to ask what would be included with that, um, if in fact there were going to be HOA fees, so, but if, 'cause kind of, is that typical stuff that, right now, well, the staff report mentions it, but the applicant says they're not planning for it, is it something they can go through?
Um, Commissioner Contreras, um, the CCNRs have not yet been drafted, and these usually get drafted before the final map, um, gets recorded, and it's typically something that is driven by the applicant developer, but obviously, like most condominium developments, um, there should, uh, there, there always are some HOA fees to maintain, um, the common areas, like the landscaping as well as the open space. But in terms of the fee, um, that is something that the city does not get involved, and is usually, um, something that's driven by the applicant.
So will there be HOA dues or not?
Um, most likely.
If the owner can call in to answer that, because I can't speak on their behalf in regards to that. Okay.
Is the owner on the line?
Vice Chair, Contreras Leo?
What, Mark?
Do you have any other questions, or are we just waiting for...
I, I don't know if we're waiting, I, I just thought I had read that in the staff report there would be HOA dues, so I want to know what that would encompass, seeing that, you know, I think our, our new commissioner's on point about this exciting, hopefully affordable, you know, project, something that is on our community can become new homeowners, and so with doing that and then having HOA fees, I just wanted to know to what extent, you know, that might be in this situation. And do the, do the other residential areas, uh, around there also have HOA fees? Or would this be something new for that area?
Commissioner Contreras, the development to the north is also a condominium development, uh, so HOA fees are pretty much standard for most condominium developments, as mentioned. Um, those fees are utilized to maintain, um, common areas. So, um, it's most likely that this development is going to have fees, but in terms of what that number is going to be, um, is usually something that gets figured out later on by the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
Ed, my question is, um, we had, we had three letters, we had three letters of opposition to this particular project. Um, how, how and what is the applicant, uh, taking, taking into consideration those concerns?
Can you, uh, speak to which concerns specifically you're referring to? And I'd be happy to address that one. I, I have some of them, the comments written right in front of me, and I'm looking at them.
Well, I, I don't have that document right here, I just wanted to, just ask that there was, there was some concerns that were listed, and I'd like to just understand what you as the applicant are doing to mitigate those concerns.
Sure. Um, as this afternoon before had, uh, left the office at 3:00, there was only one negative item that was uploaded, I don't know if two more were uploaded, but the only one that was there was the one about loud enough to notice. So, I don't know, Jerry, if you could let me know what the other concerns are on the two new items that were uploaded, because they weren't there at the 3 o'clock this afternoon, but we would be glad to take a look at them and see what we can do.
They're on the website. All of the correspondence is posted on our website, we do take comments up until 5:00 PM, um, and so if you have access to, um, the internet now, you can view the comments.
Yep.
Okay, so if you go to our, uh, website where you located the agenda for this meeting, the agenda packet, the comments are, um, listed under each item, so this one is item 1.
Ah, here we go. There's a few I had not seen.
Chairman, and, um, just to add on, a lot of the concerns with regards to the lack of community involvement, um, as mentioned, we, we have met state's laws as well as city's requirements in terms of noticing, and we did have a work study session as well as a Sunshine Orientance Meeting. Um, in addition to that, um, neighborhood, the neighbor, the adjacent properties were, um, notified of the environmental document. Um, in addition to that, I just want to make sure that the public understands that the planning commission is only recommending, um, an approval to the city council, so we will be having a city council meeting coming up, if this body decides to, uh, recommend the approval. Um, in addition to that, I believe the first meeting in August for the city council has been canceled, um, therefore this project will most likely go sometime, uh, in late August, if not early September. Um, I could definitely work with the applicant to have some form of community outreach in between that gap.
Yeah, I think, I think, Jerry, that's, I think that's an excellent idea, and that's what I'd like to, you know, given the situation, and we have a little extra time in there, I think whatever we do with regards to voting on this item, um, you know, I, I would bring up the condition of getting it, uh, an outreach session between now and, let's say, um, the middle of August, so that at least we have the opportunity to, to go through the questions and concerns on the part of the people who live in the immediate area. Okay, um... Al, is, is, is the, is the owner on the phone, or are you not able to reach her at this point in time?
Um, the owner is listening in, um, I'm hoping that they will, uh, call in to comment. Can they just call the general number that's posted?
Yes, they can do that when...
Sarah?
Yes, they are able to do that when we, um, call for public comments in a minute or so, um, we, we can take that, that, uh, comment then.
Okay. All right, do, do any of the commissioners have any, uh, other questions of, uh, the architect at this point in time? Okay, hearing none, uh, we will open, we will open the public hearing at this time, um, well, I mean, excuse me, we'll continue the public hearing at this time, and, um, do we have any public comments from, from the public at this point in time, Madam Secretary?
If you are participating by conference call and wish to speak, please press star nine now. We'll wait for participants. At this time, we have two. Again, I will call on you by the last three numbers of your phone number. Please, at that time, state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment. You will have three minutes, and I will alert you when your time is up. Caller with the last three numbers of 193, please go ahead. Caller with...
Yes, hi, my name is... Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, hi, my name is Erica Conson, from the lifetime Santanera, small business owner and a practice organizer in the Delhi neighborhood, and I am in opposition of this item on the agenda, the general plan amendment number 2020-03, and the technical tract map number 2020-01, rezoning a two-family residence neighborhood into condos with increased density, and as is well documented, Santa Ana is bleeding in COVID cases and is already the densest city in Orange County. Cities with higher densities are more susceptible to this pandemic, and we are going to be in this situation for some time unknown at the moment. If we're going to be honest, we all know that the cities of Santana and Garden Grove have been trying to develop and change the zoning of the Willowood Golf Course and the surrounding area for more than a year. We do not need more luxury apartments in Santana. I don't know how many times and how many meetings and how many different languages, we need to save this. Santana doesn't need more housing, we need affordable housing and green space, which has been made clear by the existing community that is currently residing in this area, and their lives will be directly affected. Many surveys have been completed by Riza Willowood, and it's abundantly clear that the residents do not want condos or luxury apartments, mixed living, etc., in this neighborhood. They want parks, they want micro farms, they want community centers. This form of gentrification has been proven to displace existing communities that have been thriving for generations. The systemic oppression that the residents of Santana are constantly exposed to is not only appalling, it is intentional, and it is a disgrace. The lack of transparency and communication is consistent with the way that the city sees its residents, with a complete disregard for not only their well-being, but their best interests as well as the best interests of their children, which many in power seem to forget are the future of this city, and they will not forget the way the city has chosen to operate these past few decades. We have not communicated with the, with the surrounding area. Contact Riza Willowood. Riza Willowood Coalition has been working with the residents in this community for over a year now, and they have completed surveys. You want to know what the residents want, talk to them, organize with them. That's who you need to communicate with. I didn't get notification of this meeting until this morning, so for you guys to say that you sent out letters since last week, essentially with the, with the holiday weekend, you know that the mail wasn't going to arrive until probably this weekend, if at all. So for, again, the lack of transparency is appalling, and I expect more from you all. The city expects more from you all, and we are taking attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
Next caller with the last three numbers, 032, please state your name, your position on the matter, and your comment.
Thank you. My name is Greenside, I'm a resident of Ward 5.
I'm sorry, caller, can you please, uh, repeat your name?
Yes, Nathaniel Greenside.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
And so I am not in support of this item, I'm not in support of the recommendation, uh, for, for some of the reasons which I do appreciate were already brought up by Chairman McLaughlin, which is that, um, there hasn't been a whole lot of community input on the matter. And back in 2017, when everybody had jobs, I'm sure that the notifications which were sent around got lost in the mail, you know, everybody gets distracted because they all work during the day, but imaginably so, now that a lot of folks who live in this area where the development is being proposed are of low income, a lot of multi-generational immigrant households who don't speak English as their first language, I, I would imagine it, it should be required that whoever's trying to develop our, our, our city should be going door-to-door with notifications of each and every instance where they're going to be having a community forum in any affected neighborhood in our city. And apart from the whole issue of having proper notifications, seeking actual community input on any sort of development happening in Santa Ana, I'm also very interested in knowing how the owner and the developer intend to ensure that any sort of housing that they're proposing in this neighborhood specifically is going to remain affordable for the folks who live there. As I mentioned, there's a lot of low-income folks who live in that neighborhood, and even those who own property in that neighborhood are older, and those folks are living off of fixed income. Some folks are even having to go into debt in the form of reverse mortgages after having lived and contributed to Santa Ana for decades. Now they're going to see their entire neighborhood flipped upside down. I'm sure all of you are aware of the 2525 North Main Street Initiative recently that blocked development of 2525 North Main Street, and the rationale was that that neighborhood of folks, Rancho Santiago, uh, community, did not want tall apartment buildings, more housing being constructed at the edge of their, their neighborhood. And given that that neighborhood is of a specific demographic, seeing that their initiative was able to be brought forth to the city council, they've next collected the signatures, and the city council just adopted it on the spot, it, it's, it's starting to picture that in Santa Ana, the decision-makers of commissions and councils here in the city only seem to care about the voice of certain people and developers with money in our city, and so I, I really, I don't think it's anything, there's no incentive for the property owner or developer of this project that's being proposed in front of you all to do anything, but you all as commissioners have the power to put forth any sort of recommendation to the council with any sort of...
Okay.
...you deem fit, uh, as a commis, as a planning commissioner. And so I really encourage that, that you don't put, put these forth the way that it is being recog, that it is on the agenda and the recommendation is drafted right now, but that you really do, as Marco, as the, as the, as the Chair McLaughlin has said, that you really do a better job of seeking the community input. And a lot of folks right now don't have jobs, so it's actually going to be a lot easier than it was in 2017 to go knock on folks' doors and say, hey, we want to completely make your neighborhood...
Caller, three minutes has arrived.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Nathaniel, appreciate your comments. Hey, Madam Secretary, do we have anybody else at this point in time? Has the, uh, owner of the project, uh, been able to get on?
If there was anyone else that'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine now. I'll wait a couple of seconds. There are no other callers that wish to speak on this item.
Okay, um, thank you. Having said that, uh, we will close public comments at this time, and we will bring it back to the commission for discussion. Does anyone, would anybody at this point in time like to make a motion or have a discussion? Has something to discuss? Commissioner Morrissey, any comments?
Uh, yes, thank you, Commissioner McLaughlin. So, uh, with, with regards to noticing, um, how, um, if I'm unclear as to when this project was initially noticed, was it, uh, has it been, um, on hold for a while and now just came, um, to the forefront, or has it been an, an ongoing?
Jerry, can you answer that question?
Yes, Commissioner, um, this project was originally submitted to the city back in 2017. Um, at that time, staff analyzed the project and determined that it was subject to the Sunshine Orientance, um, and therefore a Sunshine Orientance Community Meeting was held on April 9th. Uh, we did receive feedback based on the attendance that participated, that the development was, um, too dense, as well as not enough parking. Um, since then, as mentioned, the developer has reduced the number of units to 10, as well as added additional parking. Um, in addition to that, um, since the project does require an environmental review, on May 6th, we did circulate that document for public review, and people were notified of that document. And just to clarify, um, the state law requires us to notify individuals within 300 feet, the city usually notifies people within 500 feet of the project site. Um, so those particular mailers for tonight's meeting, um, as mentioned by the secretary, will mail out on July, um, 3rd.
Mr. Morrissey, is that...
Yeah, that's my question, but notwithstanding, I think there is, um, you know, we, uh, the community is concerned about their ability to, uh, give input on this project. Um, so I'm wondering if there's a way to extend the, uh, opportunity to give input? Uh, the other, the other question I have is, um, is there a requirement specifically to provide, uh, affordable housing in, uh, development this side?
Um, just to answer the first question, Commissioner, um, since this act, this party does require, um, state council approval, uh, we, as mentioned, we will also have to notify the individuals of that meeting, and during the, um, time period from now and the city council, I could work with the applicant to further, um, engage the, the community, but just wanted to clarify that the applicant has the, um, the right to develop 12 units without needing, um, this approval. I just want to clarify that the only reason that they're here, um, is because they're asking for a subdivision to allow for condominium development. And to answer your affordable housing question, the project did trigger the Housing Opportunity Orientance, and the developer has elected to pay in lieu fees that will be then utilized for the construction of affordable housing units.
Can you, Jerry, can you repeat that? I didn't, I didn't understand exactly what you're saying.
Chairman, to clarify, are you asking me to...
Second point?
Uh, the affordable housing, um, the developer or the project is subject to the Housing Opportunity Orientance because of the general plan amendment, and more than five units, um, the developer has elected to pay the in lieu fees, which will then be utilized by the city's community. city's community development agency to construct affordable housing units.
So this is not a project that's considered to be affordable housing. The developer or owner is planning on doing a in-lug fee on this, is that correct?
That is correct, Chairman.
Okay, so I think that clarifies your one question, Tom, regarding affordable housing. Yes. Thank you. Okay. No other questions, Tom? Commissioner?
No other questions, thank you.
Commissioner Nguyen, any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
Commissioner Rivera?
Go ahead. Sorry. Yeah, just a question as far as, I know in the past we've talked about where we're at with affordable housing for the city. I know this isn't luxury apartments, this is condominiums for rent. So I think this is a pretty good opportunity. We're talking about having people own property, which is something that we have heard a lot that, you know, we're not looking to build a lot of luxury apartments in the city. And I think this is a good opportunity to have condominiums. And just how it was said, I guess they have the approval already, or they have, they can build 12 units for rent without approval or anything, but they're looking to build condominiums for ownerships. I'm just curious as far as what our affordable housing looks like right now in the city? Where are we at with those numbers? I know we've been told in the past, but I kind of don't really, I don't remember, to be honest.
Min, Jerry, do you want to comment on that question?
Chairman and Commissioners, in terms of the regional housing needs, we have met those numbers and have exceeded those. Obviously, the state has just recently created new numbers that we are starting to look at that. But just to clarify, affordable housing is usually seen by our Housing Opportunity ordinance, which is the ordinance that is governed by our community development agency.
So at this point in time, what I think, what you're referring to is the RENA numbers, the RENA numbers through 2020 have been met on all levels that we had to meet with regards to housing. With the new RENA numbers that are coming out for 2020 to 2025, we don't have an indication of what we have to do at this point.
That is correct.
Well, that is correct. Just to provide, this is Min, just to provide you some numbers for the 2014-2021 numbers. The city was to provide 45 units for low, 32 units for low, and 30 for moderate, and mining for above moderate for a total of 4. From the period of 2014 to 2021 so far, the city has viewed 3,430 units, beating the total by approximately 1,600 percent.
And so Commissioner Rivera, does that answer your question with regards to affordable housing to date?
Yes, that is exactly what I was looking for. I couldn't remember what it was of the RENA number, but yes, that answered the question. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Fan?
Hi, yes, thank you. First, I didn't want to say, as a young person who grew up here in Santana, I definitely understand the struggle of housing costs. In fact, I just bought a townhome here in Santana last year, and it was very similar to these condos. In fact, it's considered a condo, it looks like a townhome. It's kind of the only home we can afford because it is a townhome, it's a single family. And I very much support medium density because it kind of is that, if you bought where, you know, if they would have put in a single-family home, you know, no one would be able to buy it, or they would have put in apartments, and that would be an issue. So that actually leads me to my question regarding apartments. If they had put in apartments, would that project have triggered the who?
No.
I'm sorry?
It would not trigger the who. The who ordinance is being triggered because of the general plan amendment.
General plan amendment, right. So I just wanted to reiterate that for some of the commentators, right? The only reason why this particular project has to pay in-lug fees is because they are seeking to provide condos, which are for purchase, rather than apartments. They could have, and please correct me if I'm wrong, put in 12 market-rate apartments without paying anything and triggering the who, so they would not have to pay in-lug fees, they would not have to provide affordable units, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. And I want to say that I really appreciate that the medium density is consistent with most of the surrounding buildings and lots. And I do want to comment, however, regarding RENA numbers. I mean, I do feel for the commentators who are saying, you know, we're looking for affordable and whatnot. And while I'm very proud that I pretty much met our RENA numbers, RENA is based off the area median interim, which $20,000 is higher for the county than it is for the city of Santana. So, you know, I hope that as we move forward, we also look at what's at stake for our residents today. And finally, and this is just a comment for applicant, I understand that you have complied with the Sunshine ordinance, and I know this just went out. I'm not happy that it happened basically over the holiday weekend, but I know we've complied with the law, or the applicant has complied with the law. But let's do better. Let's do better and talk to the community more. Don't wait over two years to have a next, you know, notice. Like, let's engage them and see what it is that they need over time, and so that our residents feel heard, that our residents feel like they've had some input, and not our residents don't feel left out of the process, so that we get community input. I just really hope that as we move forward, council, no matter what happens with the vote, that, you know, that happens in the interim. So that's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fan. Vice Chair Contreras Leo, do you have any comments or questions at this point in time? Vice Chair Contreras Leo, are you with us?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. In regards to getting notices out, was it, did I hear correctly, a notice went out over the Fourth of July weekend, prior to the weekend?
Yes, Vice Chair Contreras Leo, that is correct. Notices go out 10 days before. I send those out on a schedule. Notices go out on a routine schedule, and it's always the Friday, that Friday 10 days before.
Now, is that also part of the emails that we get from the city?
No, those are...
Does that go out? No.
Those emails alert you that the agenda is available for viewing. The notices, the 10 days before, those are notices that go out to residents who, to actually occupants and owners that live within 500 feet of the project site.
Okay, I just know that right now business is not as usual, even the way we're conducting our meetings, and I don't know if, is there a way that staff can think outside the box now in getting messaging out? I don't know if any, if there's anything else we can look at to make sure that the message is getting out. There's just, you know, a lot of different elements that are going on right now. I'd just like to maybe put that out there through the process.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo, do you have any other comments?
No, 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 thank you.
Okay. I don't have any comments at this point in time, other than just as I stated earlier, it appears that we've had some not consistent feedback from the neighborhoods. There's some question about notification and everything else. I'm understanding that, I'm not sure what neighborhoods actually make up that surrounding area, but I think that there should be, and we need to come up with a way of at least allowing the people that are in the neighborhoods surrounding this project their input one more time. And so no matter what we do from a approval perspective, I'd like to make the contingent, everything contingent on having a meeting with the neighborhoods and making sure we get the feedback that we're appearing, that we'd like to get. Having said that, I'd like to ask for a motion on this matter.
I move.
Would that be Commissioner Fan? Ty?
Oh, sorry, that's not, I moved to the board. And I second with your contingency, that you're wanting to add.
Okay, so Ty, you're making the motion for this, correct?
Yes, so I make the motion to the property resolutions and the friendly amendment that we also add that the applicant reach out to the neighborhood one more time, at least, prior to going to council. Nice second.
All right, you second it, all right. Is there any other comments at this point in time? I'm going to go through the list one more time. Commissioner Morrissey, do you have any questions or comments with the motion?
Well, yes, I guess how, so if the project was out to the residents one more time, say we, the decision is to approve the project, we report to council, and the neighborhood, how does that come back to us? I'm not sure. What the purpose is? I understand it's important to get their input, but does the project come back to us, or?
Commissioner, the item would not come back to this body, but after I coordinate with the applicant for these additional community meetings, I will go ahead and notify this body of those actions.
So how does the community's feedback get to council?
The feedback received for these additional community meetings will be provided to the city council.
Well, the other option, the other option we have, if I can say this, is that we can continue the matter with the contingency of having the neighborhood meet with the applicant, and then it would automatically come back to us on the basis of a continuum.
Chairman, that is correct.
Well, I think, this is Commissioner Fan, I think because this is merely our recommendation, meaning, you know, we just tell the council, hey, this is what we think, and I think overall, I agree that it's a great project. I think that there is something missing, notably the talking to the residents, but because this would be something that is noted again to the residents for a public hearing with the city council, I would like to see staff, when you have, and the applicant, to the community, to add that to the staff report, you know, include it in the staff report like you did with the meeting in 2018, so council can see what people are saying now, if that answers the question of getting, you know, community input to the city council.
Commissioner?
Tom, is that, is that, yeah, I mean, it's just, if one of the community meeting, results in the meeting gets to the council, and is there clear on their...
Yeah, I think staff is saying they'll get that information to council.
Right.
Yes, yes, we've done that before. We have done that before, where you condition it on having further community input or community outreach, and then that's all reported to the council at the council action time.
Because I am preparing the notice went out over the Fourth, so I think it's important everybody gets heard who wants to be heard.
Well, I think that, I think that we ought to, I think we ought to either make sure that the neighborhoods that are surrounding that, even though they may exceed the actual address, may exceed 500 feet, we still should have some input from the neighborhoods themselves, which would take into consideration the surrounding area more than 500 feet. I think we need to make sure that that's happening.
Mark, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If we do that now, are we setting a new precedent moving forward? Because, you know, in fairness, if we're going to do this, then that begins a new precedent when they start sending out notices.
Right, and the city is legally, the city is legally required to notify residents and property owners within 300 feet of the project, and we exceed that by going to 500 feet. So if you want the applicant to post notices or whatever for their community meetings, that's fine, but requiring more of the city for notification on all future projects would be overburdenous.
I'm okay with that, Chairman. I'm just saying that we need to just, I don't know how we change that, so that it's the same for...
That's fair, that's fair. At this point in time, given that that's the circumstances we're in, then that's fair. I just think we're, you know, this is, we're constantly being told by the public that in fact, they didn't get made aware of this particular project, or they didn't receive any information in time, and we kind of fall back on the 500 feet, 300 feet and everything else. And it just, I understand Lisa's concern about, you know, overextending the manpower, but I don't know how to solve the problem that says that people aren't getting the chance to input on this project, not this project, on a number of projects.
Mr. Chair, this is Min, the second... The commission has already conditioned this project to provide additional outreach between planning commission and city council, so I think that's a great condition for this project. Why don't we take the conversation of potentially discussing municipal outreach for future projects at a session, and we'll put that on the agenda so that we can discuss the issue and maybe look at something a little more comprehensive.
That's fine, that's fine. That's fine. I'm okay with that. Let's take it one more time here, and does anybody, we have a motion and a second, and the motion has been conditioned on having a neighborhood outreach meeting. Commissioner Morrissey, do you have any other comments that you'd like to make at this time?
No, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes, I do. I'm applaud the applicant to provide the 4.0 parking spaces for this complete redevelopment. But I hope the surrounding neighborhoods to understand that this particular parcel, the way I look at, I familiar with the area as well myself, if they still build like single-home residence, it would be very expensive to get the cost of development nowadays, and no longer the question about the affordable housing. They're building 10 condominiums, either for rent or for sale. Those consider to me to be more affordable for the local residents to be able to afford to either buy the condo or rent into the condo instead of building like two or three single residences. So I hope the local neighborhood to understand that, that the, I am supportive of this particular project, and I also want to support the recommendation by Commissioner Fan that the adopted, the motion adopted resolution, and we condition that the developer should meet with local residents to listen to the concern.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Nguyen. Commissioner Rivera? No, no, no questions or comments. Thank you, Commissioner Rivera. Commissioner Fan?
No, that's all for me.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
No, thank you, Chair.
Okay, I have no further comments, so with that, we will move to have a roll call vote. Madam Secretary, will you please... Madam Secretary, will you please take a roll call vote?
Yes, Commissioner Morrissey.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Commissioner Fan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Aye.
And Chair McLaughlin?
Aye.
Motion passes six with Commissioner Gar, uh, Simon, six zero with Commissioner Garcia absent.
Thank you, everybody, okay. This is the time and place to consider item number two, conditional use permit number 2020 dash 13 and the variance number 2020 dash 02 for the property located at 515 East Dyer Road. Decisions on this matter, um, decisions on this matter is final unless appealed within 10 days before we begin. Do any of the commissioners have anything they wish to disclose at this point in time?
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes. Um, I have a, uh, a potential conflict, I'm gonna have to recuse myself. Okay, Commissioner Mar, uh, Morrissey, you, you're excused. Um, and we have Commissioner, Commissioner Garcia, who is not here.
Chair McLaughlin?
She's not here, correct? Yet.
I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, Commissioner Morrissey, can you place, state your, uh, conflict of interest for the record?
Uh, potential, um, uh, business conflict.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morrissey. So at this point in time, we have five, we have a, uh, five that can vote, form. Anybody else have any comments that, uh, with regards to this particular project that, uh, they need to disclose at this point in time?
No.
Okay.
I have a good enough question, Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Uh, so I think technically I'm supposed to, uh, leave the meeting, how will I be notified when the item is?
You can mute your phone, Commissioner Morrissey, and then come back on when you hear that we've continued to the work study session.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Secretary, thank you, Commissioner Morrissey. All right, Ally, are you ready to present? Are, are you presenting?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Hi, this is Ivan, I will actually be presenting the, uh, items tonight.
Okay, Ivan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the commission, we show you this evening item number two, it's for a truck terminal and distribution center for Amazon. The applications we show you this evening are CUP number 2020 dash 18 and variance number 2020 dash 02 for the property address 5155 East Dyer Road. Moving on to slide 20, please. There may, oh, uh, there it is, thank you. Uh, as mentioned, this property is, uh, on Dyer Road, the general plan designation is industrial and is consistent with the zoning of light industrial M1 and it is also surrounded by industrial uses either north and southwest. Moving on to slide 21. As mentioned, uh, briefly, this is an application for a truck terminal and distribution center and it's essentially to construct improvements to an already built out site, uh, consisting of a building that is approximately 370,000 square feet. Uh, it's a warehouse building and the truck terminal will be designed, uh, to the current layout of the site. There will be a new perimeter wall throughout the entire street frontages, uh, both Holiday and Dyer Road, the landscaping and signage, and the design of the site is able to provide 313 onsite parking spaces. Moving on to slide 22. As you can see, this is a site plan of the entire property, it is a substantial size, um, approximately 370 thou, uh, thousand square feet of anything on the building. The current layout, the operation will be utilizing a third of the building for parking within the structure as well as parking throughout the site. There'll be a couple of entrances for the driveway ramps along the, uh, Dyer Road and where the Holiday Street, uh, the large trucks will come onsite to be loading bags. Moving on to slide 23. This slide is illustrating a couple of the building elevations. As you notice on the pipeline, the building is substantially large and to provide the entire, um, front door, the elevations would take a couple of slides. And we can see that our entire south elevation is comprised of the three, um, buildings. Then you can see one, two, three from the top to the bottom and then the last slide is part of the east elevation. Uh, the building was, um, is pretty much consistent since they're gonna stay the same with a couple of paint, um, touches and so, uh, as you see the building now, just really improved aesthetically. Moving on to slide 24. And, um, I will be providing a little quick analysis of the project as mentioned, the site modifications to ensure that the, uh, operation will be efficient, uh, minimizing any possible disruptions in traffic patterns in the area. There'll also be onsite parking that will be managed through the parking management, um, through the operator, including the empty shift. So although there's only 313 parking spaces onsite, at no point in any shift will there be more than three, 313 in three. It's impossible, as, as I mentioned, to provide additional parking spaces without dedicating more of the building and therefore, um, possible, um, operation issues and so, you know, without acquiring additional properties, uh, or constructing a parking structure, there is no physical way to provide additional parking spaces. Uh, conditions of approval have been added to both the CUP and the variance to guarantee some minimized impact onto the surrounding facilities and roadways. Moving on to slide 25. And this is just an additional analysis, uh, as mentioned, the project will create a major source of employment, uh, in the city's industrial area and it is a business to major materials as well as Bays. And recent planning programs, including parking and landscaping, uh, have resulted in new investment in a currently major and, and good sized, uh, vacant building along one of the city's arterial roadways. Moving on to slide 26. And with that, staff concludes the presentation and recommend the approval of conditional use permit number 2020 dash 18 as well as the approval of variance number 2020 dash 02 as conditions. I'm very glad to answer any questions and I believe some of the, and the people that may be able to answer any operational questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ivan. Um, at this time, does, uh, Commissioner Nguyen have any questions of, uh, staff? No, I don't, thank you. Commissioner Rivera? No, no. Commissioner Fan?
No.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Yes, thank you. I just wanna review a little bit how the trucks are going to be leaving the property. They won't be going, will they be going left on Holiday towards Warner or will that only be, um, will they only be going to the right to get onto Dyer?
To the, uh, to answer that question, to, to exit the site, um, the van will be exiting onto Holiday as well as some of the vans will be exiting directly onto Dyer, but the idea on the traffic patterns for the operation is to exit along Holiday to access Dyer Road, either make a, a left or a right on that turn signal.
If they exit Holiday, if they make a right, they'll be at the light signal, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I, I just feel it would be an issue for them to be going through Delhi, the neighborhood, left. Is there a way to only be able to exit onto Dyer? Off of Holiday?
Uh, well, the applicant actually submitted a traffic analysis of their, their operation. I'm not sure, um, I believe Mark is on the line, uh, but the idea is, and it has been approved through the city's designer review committee, um, the idea is to minimize traffic into that neighborhood and essentially just filter on through Holiday to either go east or west along Dyer Road.
Okay, and I, I, I understand that we've been in this situation before and I think that, you know, we're here because, one, I think it's a great project, but two, you know, Delhi has had its share of, you know, uh, brunt that they've had to take and I just feel like to allow these big trucks to go down through their neighborhood, um, it's just not the right thing and if we can avoid that, I, I don't see why we wouldn't. Plus the freeways on that side, on Dyer, um, I don't know how my colleagues feel about that, but.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in there for a second, uh, Vice Chair Contreras Leo. Um, I mean, you, you have two level, you have two levels of, of, of transport. You have vans, which, you know, we all kinda know what a, what a, uh, an Amazon van looks like at this point in time and then you have eighteen wheelers that are coming in, bringing in products and everything else and taking product out. Um, are, are you expecting to have both levels of transportation going through the Delhi?
No, the, uh, the eighteen wheelers are assumed to go through Dyer, not through the neighborhood, but access the site through Dallas and then Holiday and then exit the site through Holiday and straight onto Dyer, so not, not through the neighborhood.
So, so the roads, the streets are not, the, the streets are not, the streets are not set up to do, to have a certain tonnage on them, so the fact is the large trucks will not be going through and it becomes a motion of the vans.
Correct.
And you're, and you're concerned, you're, you're concerned, Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
My concern was that the, the big trucks would be going through there, since it's not written that they wouldn't, I just wanted to be sure, so I'm glad you separated the two and explained it that way, Chairman, makes much more sense, but I understand too that it was just stated that it's an assumption that only the vans are gonna go that way. Is there a way that we can put it in place that the vans can, can go left but not semi?
But Public Works, Public Works must have a tonnage that, that we can set a tonnage on that road which would basically rule out any eighteen wheelers going over that, going into the neighborhood. I mean, that's, that's one way of controlling it, I mean.
Okay.
Is that, Ivan, is that a correct statement that I just made?
Yes.
That works for me.
Is that, is that your question? Okay, um, my question, I've got a couple of questions, uh, we, we talked about the parking and I'm not necessarily concerned about the parking, is this, this is, this is gonna be a 24/7 facility, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
And it's gonna be running, it's gonna be running three shifts?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, when we talk about getting out onto Holiday and then turning left or right, turning left or right on Dyer Road, um, assuming most would go to the left because it gets to the highways, uh, my question is, are we changing anything relative to the light sequencing on Dyer or is that gonna remain the same?
Not that I'm aware of, but that you heard of consulting through Public Works and though they reviewed the part, the traffic analysis, it wasn't mentioned that any sequence would be changing, at least I was not informed of such.
I mean, it, it seems to me that, that, you know, the vans, I mean, the vans can, I mean, I, in my neighborhood, I can see six to 10 Amazon vans at any given time in the neighborhood, um, but I'm looking at it from the standpoint of, you know, exiting and getting out onto the highway, um, the, is, is this gonna be a problem with vans being backed up along the, along the Holiday Road waiting to get the traffic light to change? Just a thought.
Mr. Chairman, this is Vince Fregoso. The only changes.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir, the only changes that were identified in the traffic study was that the, uh, turn pockets had to be lengthened out a little, a little bit longer than what they're out there now. So the turn pocket on Dyer, that's gonna turn left hand to go north on Holiday and the turn pocket on Holiday turning left, uh, southbound, southbound on Holiday, they both have to be extended. That was all the recommendations of the traffic study and those will be implemented as part of the project.
Okay, all right. Good enough, um, that's all I've got for questions. Ivan, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and we'll move on and, um, Madam Secretary, have we received any comments, uh, on this item or any comments received by five, the 5:00 p.m. deadline, have they been distributed to the commission and posted on our website to provide a summary report?
Yes, all comments received by our deadline have been posted to our website and distributed to the commission. Um, a summary report of the comments, we received a total of two, one in opposition and the, the other was a general comment, um, requesting a traffic signal at, uh, an intersection. And that concludes the summary report for that, that item.
Okay. All right, uh, at this point in time, the public hearing is now open. Would the applicant like to speak on the matter?
Applicant.
Mark, are you, are you? Hi, it's Mark DeBourbon with Amazon, uh, can you guys hear me? We can hear you. Uh, very good. Uh, again, my name is Mark DeBourbon, I'm a senior program manager with real estate and the title team, uh, based here in California. I work for Amazon though, out of my corporate office in Seattle and I just wanted to thank the planning commissioners tonight for hosting this meeting. I know in all these trying and troubling circumstances and I appreciate the online meeting and the chance that you guys can take a look at this project. Um, Amazon is excited to come to San Ana, be a part of the community, long-term member here and, uh, again, any questions, happy to answer them, but, uh, just again, thank you all for hearing us and, and considering the project.
Okay, Mark, thank you. Um, does Commissioner Nguyen have any questions of the applicant?
Uh, no, I do not have any questions. I just wanna have a comment that would like to, uh, give a warm welcome to Amazon to select San Ana as was the, for the opening of the project. Um, I, I know the project, project will create a number of employment for our residents as well as bringing it to the city. Uh, I would like to, I would like to, uh, for the motion to adopt the resolution. for our residents as well as bringing it to the city. Uh, I would like to, I would like to, uh, for the motion to adopt the resolution asked in condition.
Oh, we, we haven't closed, we haven't closed the public hearing at this point in time, Ken?
Okay.
So when it comes, when we can bring it back to the commission, we'll, we'll be more than happy to take the motion from you. Um, Commissioner Rivera? Uh, no, no questions or comments at this time. Commissioner Fan?
Hi, yes, um, thank you for being available for questions. And I just wanted, I guess, some insight. I do see that the staff report mentions it'll be approximately two hundred and thirty-five full-time jobs with, um, additional part-time jobs and over two hundred jobs with their party delivery person. Um, can you explain to me whether, or I guess the process for Amazon hiring, you know, uh, whether they have preference for folks who live in the area in Santa Ana or anything like that? Um, I guess I just would like more.
Commissioner Fan, uh, again, Mark DeBourbon with Amazon. I have my, uh, business associate, uh, Stephen Meduli Williams, who is part of our economic development team at Amazon as well. Uh, he took the time this evening to join me on this call. And I don't know if he, I believe he's still on, uh, if he's unmuted himself. But if it's okay with you, I'd like to introduce Stephen Meduli Williams to you. A- and Stephen, uh, again, heads up our, our economic development team here in California. Um, and I'll turn it over to him for those kinds of questions, if that's all right.
Sounds perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen, are you on?
Well, Santa Ana was talking about putting in special filters in the air. Did it mention of that? Well, it's not.
I don't think Stephen's been unmuted. I don't know if the folks that's in, is, are controlling the Zoom call can unmute Stephen. Uh, may he be happy to...
Yes, we have gone through the list. There is no one on mute. Um, there are no participants on mute. Everyone is unmuted. So if Stephen is online, you may go ahead and speak now.
Or maybe he needs to hit star nine to raise his hand?
No.
He may have dialed in on the public.
Um, yeah, not as a participant. I do have, um, let's see here, caller, last three numbers, seven, eight, eight, that has their hand raised. I'm sorry, I cannot tell if this is Stephen or if this is a member of the public that wants to speak. Um, but we'll go ahead and, um, unmute that person. Caller with the last three numbers of seven, eight, eight, is, are you Stephen?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
All right, we found, we found Stephen. Thank you.
So, uh, just, just good evening, everyone. Good morning. Good evening, uh, commissioners. So, uh, again, I'm Stephen Meduli Williams. I'm with the, uh, Amazon Economic Development Team. And so, uh, I don't, I wanted to ask you a question about jobs. So, um, yeah, so there are three types of jobs that are gonna be generated from the, from the distribution center. Uh, they include full-time Amazon associates. Uh, they, they also include what we call delivery service partner drivers. These are the individuals who are gonna drive the van, uh, on a daily basis. And then the last component of the jobs are what we call flex drivers. And these are, uh, individuals who will, uh, use their own vehicles to deliver packages on Amazon's behalf. Um, the vast majority of these jobs will be, uh, what we call D S P driver jobs. So they will be independent delivery companies who will deliver packages in the vans, in the sprinter vans, as you see, with Amazon. They'll, most of the employees will be drivers. Uh, the next largest tier will be the Amazon associates working at the site. And then lastly, a small percentage of the jobs will be by, will be Amazon flex drivers. In terms of, uh, recruiting for the positions, uh, right now, uh, we've had to change our standard operating, uh, procedures as it relates to hiring and launching sites, primarily due to COVID nineteen. Uh, before, we would have direct hiring events in the locations where we're, very close to the locations where we're actually operating our sites. Uh, generally speaking, we do, we generally hire locally just because we want our employees, our associates to be close to where they work, and we want the communities to be reasonable. And that's actually how it's generally materialized in the past, is that that, you know, most of the come from the surrounding community that's, that's the delivery station, uh, operates out of. Uh, and, and so the only real significant difference now is that our hiring process is virtual. And so what we do is that we partner with local organizations, particularly workforce development organizations, to ensure that the word gets out, uh, related to, uh, the launch of a new site. Uh, but it's, but again, the, the process is now about ninety percent virtual. And the only thing that employees actually, potential employees come in for is to provide documentation of the delivery work in the U.S. Uh, aside of that, everything else is done virtually. And what we would do is, prior to the site launching, Dyer Avenue, Dyer Road, is that we would engage, uh, at your suggestion, local workforce development. And again, get them geared up to get the word out about how to apply virtually for these jobs on this site, and do it with enough lead time to make sure we get as many Santa Ana residents as possible. But I hope that answered your questions. Um, but I'm more than happy to, uh, to answer any other questions you may have about, uh, the hiring process and, and our attempts for the site.
Yes, uh, thank you so much, Stephen. Um, definitely answered my question. And I know it's not a land use condition or anything like that, but I do encourage, uh, Amazon and the applicant to learn to work with these community organizations, um, especially around Delhi and, you know, other communities in Santa Ana specifically. It would really benefit our residents here. So, um, well, thank you for your answer. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fan, this is Guy. Um, what I can do is work with the applicant, as we have done in the past, is that we have the workforce center, and I will connect the applicant to the city's workforce center, and they can coordinate our job there, uh, once they're hired in the process.
Yeah, that would be perfect. And especially if that can be done in multiple languages, in German, Vietnamese, and Spanish, that would be fantastic, if we don't already do that.
Well, a- again, we'll be happy to work with any organization that you, that you recommend and, and, and however we need to, to get the word out, we're more than happy to do.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. Um, stay, stay on the line, 'cause I'm sure there's gonna be other questions. Um, Vice Chair Contreras Leo, have you got any questions?
Yeah, I think I read, yes, I think I had read somewhere about street parking. What is that about? Is there going to be street parking? Staff or...
Mark, can, Mark, can you?
Yeah, allow, it's, again, it's Mark DeBourbon with Amazon. Uh, allow me to address that question, if you don't mind. Amazon, uh, you know, we are, we are a five-year-old business within Amazon. Uh, our delivering of, of products through people's doorsteps and homes, uh, is again, a somewhat new endeavor for us. And, uh, we are, we are taking away learning as we go right and left. And, and the real estate, when I started with Amazon in January of twenty sixteen, we had, uh, approximately six, I believe, six delivery stations. Now we're over two hundred. And again, we continue to get better and better at what we do. The real estate that I looked at in twenty sixteen, no, in no way, shape, or form mirrors the real estate that I look at today. So, for example, I might have taken inline space at a center like this, where I had neighbors, you know, three on the right and three on the left. I might have been in the little, or in the middle, and we might have taken parking, uh, whatever we could take. And then if it was street parking, we would have done that. What Amazon has done, as a wellness business, is to make sure that we stay self-contained within the limit perimeter, uh, of the sites that, that, that we lease from our, from our landlord business partners. So in a long story, to make it a little bit short, we will accommodate all of our vans, uh, trucks, and delivery drivers throughout, uh, ju- inside of the four, four-boundary markers, if you will, on the property. We do not intend to park on the streets of Santa Ana with our, with our vans or our personal vehicles.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. I know that some residents have been, written in about that. So I appreciate your explanation. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, you're good. All right, a couple of quick questions I've got is, uh, when we talk about the manpower that you have today on, uh, in, in the facility, when, when do you expect to transition to where you'll be full, full-on twenty-four-seven for the entire facility? And, and how does that, how does that grow in your, when it comes to your, your, uh, full-time, uh, associates? What, what's your growth perceived to be at this point in time?
Well, our growth, we have a, a slower ramp-up period, if you will. Uh, once we get into the, into the building, it's turned over, and we do our first day of delivery, we don't just turn the faucet on all the way. We have a slower ramp-up period. We give our employees, our station managers, and delivery van drivers what we call seasonality testing, meaning that we, we walk before we run. So, for example, I would, as you were mentioning, the first, you know, three to five weeks, we might be at forty or fifty percent of what the station is capable of. Again, getting up, maybe sitting on marching orders, and getting everybody, you know, uh, on board, if you will, with the nuances of, of, of this site. We will then steadily every week, up with us a little bit more, uh, getting up to a, a full, a full jog, if you will, on a, we call it steady-state basis. And that generally takes anywhere, total of about, I'm gonna say, five to eight weeks, to get that cadence up and running and making sure that we have the right people in place and we're working out all the kinks and bugs. Again, when we talk about a twenty-four-seven facility, there's many different functions that are taking place, when the packages come in overnight, when the sortation associates, uh, sort them based on DIP codes, when the van drivers come in in the morning, load the van, they depart, that's another function. Uh, the flex drivers that come in in the afternoon, uh, again, another component. So when we say twenty-four-seven, there's always something going on in the facility, primarily focused around the delivery of these packages during normal business hours. Um, that's generally the, uh, that's generally the, uh, the focus of the station, is again, to deliver those packages. And everything else that happened, uh, surrounding that, uh, is the support of the delivery of those packages.
Okay. All right. Um, the only suggestion I, I, I think Min gave the suggestion of getting, you know, getting you connected with the, with the, uh, work center. And that's, that's a great idea. And I know the other area that, uh, we're reaching out through, to, to Amazon is also through the, the chamber and the city when it comes to workforce development, too. So that's another facet that, um, the, the chamber for Santa Ana would be another place in, in which we could initiate, uh, uh, getting some workers signed up and everything else. So, um, that's a consideration.
Sure, we happen to participate. As my business partner, Stephen Meduli Williams, mentioned, I'd be happy to partner with, uh, with the folks there in Santa Ana to make something like that happen. Again, we want Santa Ana residents, that we think it makes for happier employees when they don't have to travel as far to work. And it just makes good business then to have, have the citizens of, in the community, inside the community of Santa Ana to work at the station.
Okay, that's great. We appreciate that. All right. Um, this is, with no further questions of the applicant, uh, Madam Secretary, do we have any, um, other individuals that would like to comment?
If you'd like to comment on this item, please press star nine now. We'll wait a couple of seconds to see if we have any callers. We don't have anyone who has indicated that they'd like to speak.
Okay, hearing none from the applicant and hearing none from the public, this public hearing is now closed. Um, do the question, do the, do any of the commissioners have any questions of the staff at this point in time? Um, Commissioner Nguyen? No, I have no questions. Thank you. Commissioner Rivera? No, no question. Commissioner Fan?
Not here.
Okay, Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
No, thank you.
Okay. And again, my question on the T I, so with T I, we're looking at, um, roughly from today until full hundred percent up and running. We're expecting that to be how long, Mark?
I'm sorry, the question you said, the T I.
Yeah, you, you do, are you, are you not doing tenant improvements at this point in time?
Oh, yes, we are. Yes, we are. I'm sorry. Tenant improvement work, yes, we are. Um, I believe the station is scheduled to be open. Uh, Fritz, I think I have my construction manager on the line as well. But if I'm not mistaken, I believe we're going first quarter twenty twenty-one on this site.
Okay. And, and, and that's, that's to be ramping up, and then you, you could probably eight weeks get you, so it's first quarter of, of twenty twenty-one is when you expect to be online completely?
I believe that is correct. And again, we get that ramping up stuff going on pretty fast. Uh, we're doing most of the hiring beforehand, uh, making, you know, making our commitment to offers out there and things like that. And then again, we just bring people on. Again, we don't want to burden the site, we don't want to burden the community. We want to make sure that we get a nice cadence going, and then continue to step up, if you will, until we get to a, a, a steady-state jog.
Great. Appreciate the input, Mark. Um, with that, if there's no other comments or questions, do we have a motion on this item?
Yes, we'd like to make a motion, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead, Fan.
I would like to make a motion to, uh, adopt this resolution number two zero two zero dash one three acquisition, and also approve the variant number two zero two zero dash zero two acquisition.
Second?
Okay, thank you. And the second is, uh, Vice Chair Contreras Leo? Okay, any other per, any other comments at this point in time? Hearing none? Madam Secretary, will you do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes.
Commissioner Rivera?
Uh...
Commissioner Fan?
Hi.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Hi.
And Chair McLaughlin?
Hi.
Motion passes with Commissioner Garcia absent and Commissioner Morrissey abstaining.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mark. Uh, good luck. Stephen, good luck. Thank you for, um, helping us through this, uh, process today.
Thank you, commissioners. Again, we look forward to becoming a part of Santa Ana. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you very much. With that, we'll, we'll conclude the business calendar at this point in time. We'll bring it back to a work study. And I believe, Vern, you're gonna do the work study?
Mr. Chairman, Vince Fregoso again. Vernie and I are gonna give you a, uh, update on the general plan. So, uh...
Okay, so the two of you guys are gonna...
I'm gonna, yes, sir. I'm gonna start you off and hand it off to Vernie. And Vernie's been living this project for about four years. He will, yeah, fill in the details. But bottom line, this is a presentation that was given to the city council last week. And it's just a high-level overview of the general plan. Most of you know about it, have, have lived it for the last few years as we have. So Vernie's gonna kind of give you a, a quick overview of the project. And then at the end, there are some of the key dates, which are really what we're trying to focus on, and kind of give you a heads up on, uh, what to expect as far as the next steps in this project. So Vernie, are you still engaged right now?
Uh, sure am. Good evening, uh, Chair McLaughlin, commissioners, and welcome to Commissioner Morrissey, who I think had been put away. Hopefully he's back with us. Can you hear me okay?
Is he, yeah, can we check, uh, Sarah, would you check and see whether Tom is online?
Yes, Commissioner Morrissey is online, and he is unmuted and now participating in this meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. Great, thank you. So if I may, as Vince was mentioning, we provided a brief update to the city council. And anytime that staff has some exciting, uh, news to share or is ready to go out to the community, before we do that, we'd like to touch base with our commissioning council to let them know kind of the latest and greatest since we, uh, spoke with you last. In this case, uh, we were before the commission, uh, around this time last year in twenty nineteen, where we presented our vision statement, core values, and, uh, status support of the general plan, uh, focus areas, if you recall. Tonight, tonight, we're here to check in on our current progress, and as Vince mentioned, announce some key dates as we move closer towards adoption later this year. So these first few slides in our presentation, um, start to ask the question of what makes the work world-class city. Some of you may remember some of these images, so we'll kind of go through them quickly. Next slide, please. All right, can I get the next slide, please?
Yes, it's just coming up.
Oh, okay, thank you. So these images.
Sarah, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing any slides on this.
Why'd you go back? Please change the slide. To the next slide.
That's that's perfect, Sarah, man. All right, if I may continue, so the these next series of slides start to speak to what makes a city a world-class city, something to offer, something of quality, substance, folks around the world kind of consistently recognize. And then moving on to this current slide here, we're talking about Santa Ana's regional setting and its adjacency to some key, you know, regional airports, universities, and then, you know, on our west coast part of of the United States here, we have our beaches that are huge attractions, and then any Disneyland resorts in Anaheim and so forth. We're looking at ways to create leakages towards Santa Ana and what it has to offer. Let me get the next slide, please. All right, so then we ask ourselves the question of what Santa Ana has to offer. Santa Ana continues to be a leadership, take a leadership role in the county. Its unique urban setting is a draw for, you know, the younger generation and emerging businesses. It, after surveying our community, has become the center of culture, art, food, and music, and its residents and our residents are proud of its rich history and want to preserve its heritage, things including the future streetcar line and its its location in the county for being the county seat and for its level of architecture, history, and its path offers something real for folks to really want to come here. So that's where we start to ask ourselves what we want to be. Next slide, please. All right, so I can just continue on here to the next slide? All right, so the general plan's purpose, as you know, many of the commissioners were around last last year, but for those that weren't, we'll provide a quick update on what the general plan's purpose is. As you know, it may or may not be, as you may or may not know, it's the local government's long-term blueprint for the community's vision of growth. It's the long-range constitution that sets forth thorough policies and programs to ensure that we accomplish our mission, our mission, and it is mandated by the state with seven required elements. Last time we updated this comprehensively was 1982, so it's been quite a while since we've done that. We have updated various elements over the past decade. If I can get the next slide? Part of our original policy framework, thank you, we presented our goals and guiding principles in trying to work towards protect protecting, enhancing, and transforming our city while addressing key priorities and building on our key assets, as I mentioned, our rich history, our culture, and our people. The new general plan will be comprised of 12 new elements, which will embrace current topics, practice and practices, and philosophies within five core values, which are health, equity, sustainability, culture, and education. And these are the 12 elements that you see here outlined on the slide. We can continue. Grab the next slide, all right. So this this slide here covers a summary of our community outreach efforts over the past, as Vince mentioned, four and a half years of work that we've done, which began back in 2016 with the initial community outreach. There was a video series that was presented, 40 citywide meetings, a youth summer program, and then in 2017, we distilled the executive summary that was presented to the City Council and assembled a general plan advisory group. And I want to thank Commissioner Nguyen was part of that G-PAG back in 2017 to distill the information that we received from our community. Together, we put together a vision statement, our five core values, and then our goals and policies, which today will become our draft elements that we were excited to share with you at upcoming meetings. In 2018, we had a technical advisory committee, which is different than the general plan advisory group, in that the tack was comprised of individuals from the city and other jurisdictions, such as the Orange County Fire Authority and other responsible agencies, to look at the goals and policies produced by the stakeholders themselves to make sure that they were relevant and that they were technically correct. And then in 2019, we did a community survey and we did individual workshops in each of the five, what are we called, the focus areas, which I'll go over here, received about 650 responses to that survey, and then 300 participants at the at the five focus area workshops, which were well attended in 2019. The feedback that was received at those individual workshops, together with meetings with key stakeholders and council members, formulated what was the focus area project description that led to the notice of preparation for the beginning of the environmental documentation for the project that got started in February of this year. And so, right now, we're kind of at a critical phase where we want to go back out to the community. We understand the topic of environmental justice is of key importance to the city, and items such as open space and just environmental impact to our residents was brought to our attention from the get-go. So we wanted to do some additional outreach related to environmental justice. We did some strategic outreach and sent out about 32,000 flyers to our communities in these areas, and then have since put up a narrated PowerPoint presentation. It's about 20 minutes in length that I encourage you to please check out. It's in English and Spanish at this time, and it's also available as a standard presentation for those that might have, you know, any sort of impairment to to audio. So that that concludes kind of our our outreach efforts. If I can get the next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the key planned focus areas, it's part of that notice of preparation, intended to create five new focus areas, South Main Street, Brand and 17th Street to the 22, SR 22 to the north, West Santa Ana Boulevard along the the streetcar trajectory, the 55 freeway dire road area, which is adjacent to the Amazon site that we discussed here this evening, and then South Crystal Street, which would be connecting our existing South Crystal Street Improvement Plan that terminates at Warner Avenue down to the southerly civil city limit in Costa Mesa to capitalize on some of the success that Costa Mesa and the Southwest Metro area has recently had. The areas in blue here on this map kind of show existing mixed use or planned areas that are in the ground, and so we felt it was important to focus along these corridors to start to create some vital connections throughout our city. If I can get the next slide, please. All right, so part of the update today was try to give the commission a sense of how this new general plan will be formatted. As I mentioned, it's going to address key community topics of importance to our residents and businesses. There will be eight mandated topics or elements. There were seven physical elements, but the eighth topic is the environmental justice element that we hope to include and incorporate in all elements, with key goals and policies throughout our entire document. The new general plan, instead of being this voluminous, you know, book that's shelved somewhere in city hall, is actually going to be streamlined and very visually appealing hopefully, and it's going to comprise the three volumes that are separated into areas that are kind of similar. The first being services and infrastructure, the natural environment, and the built environment. So there will be topics such as open space, which would belong, for example, in the natural environment volume of our general plan. The next slide, please. All right, so as I mentioned, the purpose of our environmental outreach was to do a focused effort in these EJ areas. As I mentioned, we did about 30,000 physical flyers to our residents as well as electronic correspondence to our interested parties in June of this year. We did email and web distribution of the outreach flyer that included kind of a one-page front portion of what the environmental justice SP 1000 requirements are, as well as what we were doing firsthand in Santa Ana, in our community to address some of the key topics that our residents brought up. In addition to that, I mentioned the online web learning tool that we've just launched, so I encourage you to check that out. And then we will be posting a summary of key policies and implementation actions specifically related to environmental justice here on our website. If I can get the next slide, please. So as Vince mentioned, there's really no action item here before you this evening. The idea is to try to get the word out on upcoming community workshops. We've landed on two dates, July 31st, which is a Friday, and August 1st, which is a Saturday, and provided evening and morning events in order for in order to allow for increased participation. The first event is going to be in the evening, I believe at 6:00 PM, and then on Saturday, August 1st in the morning at 10:00 AM. These will be about 90 minute sessions and allow some live Q and A with our residents or stakeholders that wish to ask questions about our draft general plan. We're intending to present the draft plan to our community. Again, this is the draft plan. It's not an adopted plan or it's not a plan that is ready to go. It's still very much in draft format for the community to provide feedback on at that time. And then we will be providing an overview of major changes to policy, land use plans, so it's an open and answer question, as I mentioned. And our next slide, please. All right, so just to cover our next steps, we're talking about environmental justice, which is current and ongoing right now, and our upcoming community workshops, again, on the 31st and August 1st. I encourage the commission to come out and join us on these at these virtual workshops. We're going to be sending out invitations here in the next few days virtually, and those invitations will go out to our interested party, citywide, NICSOL, social media, to have information related to joining the virtual workshop, pre-registration, and what you can expect at the meeting itself. And as I mentioned, the current environmental impact report is in process and is scheduled to be released here in August, early August, August 3rd, and then we will be proceeding with the draft element review at subsequent study sessions with both the planning commission and city council. We're going to have two study sessions coming up for the planning commission and as well as two study sessions with the city council in order to vet the actual draft elements, you know, in in smaller portions. There's so much information to cover, wanted to allow for adequate processing of the information and feedback as we continue through this process. And the next step is planning commission and city council later this year. This is our goal. So with that, I thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does, does anybody have any comments or questions, Vernie, at this point in time? Commissioner Morrissey, do you have any questions or comments? Commissioner Morrissey?
He is on the line and he is not muted.
Okay.
He just muted.
Oh, he. Commissioner Morrissey?
Okay, we'll go on to Commissioner Nguyen. Any questions or comments of staff? I have no questions, thank you. Commissioner Rivera? No comments or questions at this point. Commissioner Fan?
Hi, yes, I do have some comments. First, thank you for this. I'm a bit of a planning nerd, so this is very exciting for me. The fact that our general plan wasn't updated, it's been long, it's never been updated in my lifetime, so it's been quite a while, and we do need something to be our roadmap. A couple issues, one, are we planning to present this or kind of announce it at the comlink meeting? I know we do have attendees there. That would be great. And of course, NICSOL also. She's got, I'm guessing she's got in the works or anything like that. I just want to make sure that people do get to, you know, know about these workshops and are able to attend.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Fan. We are finalizing our NICSOL communication that's scheduled to go out probably by tomorrow. It's going to go out in multiple languages and inform folks about the upcoming workshops. So that has is happening.
Okay, and so Friday night and Saturday morning, I maybe, do you have a plan to why we chose a Friday night and a Saturday morning? Because maybe it's just me, but usually Friday night, even in quarantine, we have class, you know, people do Zoom happy hours and Saturday mornings, people often might not be up by 10:00 in the morning to. So if you have a history of high attendance at this time?
You know, thank you for the question. We have those two dates identified just based on our aggressive schedule to try to get this plan adopted in 2020. They were the first available dates that didn't conflict with other city events. There's lots going on right now in the summer and wanted to afford our residents the opportunity if they had full-time jobs, for example, to attend a Saturday session. And it's it's typical that we have weekday, you know, evening meetings related to larger projects. Friday happened to be the available day, so we decided to do back-to-back meetings Friday and Saturday.
Okay. And then for the outreach for environmental justice areas, over 32,000 residents, where, you know, how did we decide this? Where did it actually go? That's 10% of the city. I guess I'm trying to think of it. Yeah.
Okay, so our environmental justice areas in Santa Ana are limited to about 17 census tracts in our community, and largely they're located in areas that are typically, as you would say, they would bear a disproportionate proportionate amount of pollution or health risk. So typically, they're adjacent to like freeways or industrial uses. So those are the key targeted areas that we have for environmental justice. The state puts out a tool that is called CAL Environment Screen that allows us to map our community based on variables, typically based on variables related to risk, whether it's pollution, things like obesity, traffic, health issues, poverty rate, language barriers, poverty, asthma, things like that come up, and then allowed us to identify and prioritize these communities based on some of these impacts. So what we did was we mapped them and then we did a strategic outreach to those census tracts in multiple languages so that they, you know, the affected neighborhoods were aware of the upcoming general plan. And we have received definitely some emails and folks that are interested, and we've compiled a lot of this data and are open to publishing it on the website and sharing it with our council for their consideration as well.
That's great. My last question is, for these workshops, are you planning to do kind of just surveys? I know it's 90 minutes, but I remember when we did the shift plan workshop, you know, with the live responses, and we had a lot of participation, and that was really fantastic to see, you know, in real time. So if you can do something like that, I'm not sure how it's set up, but I think that was a great way to get, you know, tally and obtain feedback and record it. That was awesome.
Thank you, thank you. We are planning on using platforms similar that we've done at comlink, if you're familiar with comlink, where we will pick a question and answer at the end of the meeting. There may be some sort of survey, I'm not sure at this at this stage, but it will be a recorded webinar, which can be replayed at, you know, the residents or business owners' leisure so that they can be well informed and then provide comments either in writing or by phone.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rivera? No, no questions. Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
No questions. Thank you.
Just a couple, just a couple of questions I've got. Number one is, is that for whatever reason, on, on the, on my screen, there, there was a significant delay in the slides versus the, the discussion, and I, I, I'd like to ask, are we able to get a copy of this presentation so that we can look at it a little bit different, out of leisure, so to speak, at this point in time? The second question, the second question I have is, I'm assuming, based on what we're talking about with these two dates, the thirty-first and the first, these are going to be virtual, these are going to be virtual meetings? And, or how is this, how is this going to play out?
Chair McLaughlin, if I may, thanks for your comment. We'd absolutely be happy to provide you with a copy of the presentation. And the two workshops are indeed going to be virtual based on the current COVID situation, so what we're going to do is, is get the word out as soon as we're able to, using all means of access, and then try to make it accessible to as many folks so that we can get that input.
Okay. And then you said it's also going to be, it's also going to be put on YouTube, I'm assuming, and based on YouTube, it'll be available for people to view at a different time and place. If we're doing something like that, are we going to set a deadline for when we would expect people, if, if the event's on the thirty-first, how many days are we going to give people to respond and make, you know, bring up questions or comments or concerns about the, about the plan? What's the schedule going to look like?
Yeah, that's a great point. We, we will be very clear in the community workshops in, in terms of when folks can provide commentary. Keep in mind that these workshops aren't, aren't going to be for the adoption of the plan, but we're going to give folks the important dates for upcoming planning commission, city council feedback, when the plan actually becomes a public hearing, and, you know, when their, when their comments would be considered quote-unquote "final" for incorporation into the plan.
Okay. All right. Does any of the commission, at this point in time, have any further questions for Bernie? Okay. Thanks a lot for the presentation, Bernie. We appreciate it, and look forward to seeing the events on the thirty-first and first. Thank you. All right. With that said, we have finished the work study, and we will bring it back to the commission for, first of all, we'll bring it back to staff. Staff, do you have any comments at this point in time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point in time, I just want to join the chair and the planning commissioner. Welcome, Deputy Planning Commissioner, Commissioner Morrissey. I look forward to working with you and providing you support, you know, on the planning commission. So welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you. That's all I have. Any other, any other staff members' comments?
Chair McLaughlin, may I? Oh, can we please go back to the written comment question, and then we will also take any comments, see if there's anyone that'd like to speak on, on agenda item number three?
Okay. Fair enough.
So we did receive one...
So, anybody that we could...
I'm sorry.
Good.
I'm sorry about that. We did receive one comment that was distributed to the commission and was also posted on our website, was a general comment regarding zoning, and that is on the website. And if there's anyone that would like to speak on agenda item number three, please dial star nine now, and we'll go ahead and wait a couple of seconds. We do have one caller that would like to comment on this matter. Caller with the last, last three numbers, four, seven, seven, please state your name and your comment.
Yes, my name is Dale Helbig. I'm resident of Santa Ana for twenty-eight years. A couple of comments. One is, I'm hoping that the general plan elements updates are issued or reviewed prior to the July thirty-first, August first meetings. We've been asking for this update for a long time. It'd be nice to let the public see these things before we start getting into the review of the environmental impact report and other items. Also, I did send in a letter to you guys, and I'd like to clarify something that was pointed out to me, and that was, I said, the entire street on Grand Avenue was being re-designated as a district center. I was incorrect in that, in the fact that part of it's a district center south of the five freeway, everything else north of it is being rezoned to urban neighborhood, including the post office, which is institutional, single-family homes, LR seven areas are going to be urban neighborhood designation, and a lot of other areas. So what concerned me initially, and got my attention, was when this was presented in the twenty nineteen workshop, the only area that was discussed at the neighborhood meeting at John Muir was the area from Lincoln over to Grand Avenue on both sides of Seventeenth Street was going to be changed, and they gave alternative one and alternative two, which either changed it to urban neighborhood with a three-story, four-story, or five-story designation. And now it's expanded all the way up to the twenty-second freeway. They added an additional mile of rezoning, and it also added all the area down south of the five freeway, which is another three-quarters of a mile rezoning. So that wasn't initially presented to the public during these workshops, and that was kind of just slid in on the side and, hey, we're going to, this is what we want to do type deal. So I would like to see the whole plan versus just getting thrown out piecemeal pieces one at a time. You know, all this urban neighborhood is going to add a lot of people to the area. I've been told, well, you know, don't worry about the open space, that'll be covered in the open space element, but the fact is, these things got to work together. And without being able to see both of them side by side, how are we supposed to know how they're working together when we're seeing an additional mile and a half almost added to the urban neighborhood zoning requirement? So I'm hoping that we get to see this soon, sooner, rather than later. Thank you for your time, guys. Stay safe.
Yep. Thank you, Dale. All right, we missed you there. We didn't, I didn't see your hand up.
No problem.
Okay. Do we have any other, any other people that would like to comment at this point in time?
No other callers.
Okay. Hearing none, then we'll, we'll go back to comments on the part of the commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Nguyen.
I would like to welcome Commissioner Tom Morrissey to the planning commission. I'm looking forward to work with him for the benefit of residents and the city.
Commissioner Rivera?
Same. I'd just like to welcome Commissioner Morrissey and staff. Thank you for answering the questions today.
Okay. Commissioner Fan?
I echo everyone's sentiment, and also stay dry, stay cool, stay safe, and I'll see you next time.
Okay. Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Same thing. Big welcome to our new member of our, of our group here, and hope you feel welcome, which is a different way of entering on the commission these days. We don't get to visually meet you yet. But anyway, thank you to staff, as always, for answering my questions and providing us materials.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Morrissey?
Yes, thank you. Well, first, I'd like to thank Councilmember Mendoza for pointing me to the position. I'm very honored to be here, and I'm very excited to be a part of the commission, and I'm looking forward to working with everyone to improve the way we live, work, and play in the city. It's a very exciting time with the adoption of the new general plan. Very exciting plan, and looking forward to being a part of that. Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, Tom. And I'll say welcome, and I've, I've known Tom for quite a long time, and this is really a great opportunity for the, for the planning commission, as well as for Tom, to be part of the planning commission, so I look forward to working with, with you on a regular basis. I'd like to just also comment on, on Dale Helbig's comments that he made, and I'd like to make sure that possibly someone from staff can take and follow up and make sure that we do, in fact, answer some of the questions before we get into the presentations on the thirty-first and first, so that we have a little bit of, of understanding and groundwork done beforehand. At this point in time, hearing no more comments, I would like to adjourn the meeting. The next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting is scheduled for July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, at five thirty P.M., and it will be a virtual meeting as always. Any, with that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Margie.
Thank you, Margie. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.